Hello, this is the zoning board of appeals this evening. I am Janice Tatarca. I am joined by the other members of our board and I'm going to take the role. You go Perdomo here. Put your, Arthur Ochenalt.
Here.
Marilyn Vega Torres.
Here.
Janice Tatarca here. We're also joined by Will Checho and Hector Velez. The first thing we'll take care of a little business. Have people have the opportunity to review the minutes from our last meeting. If you have, may have a motion or to approve, comment, whatever is their comment.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. We're going to move. So we have, a couple of our cases have moved. We have 2025-10, 3462 Winnis-Cimit Street and 1420 Penbrook Street. They've asked to withdraw. Do we need a motion to allow them to withdraw? Do I have a motion to allow the withdrawal?
Motion to withdraw.
Arthur?
Second.
Second. You go. All in favor? Aye. We have a motion to continue. I want to say three cases. We've had a request to continue them. 2025-11, which is 81618 Broadway, 2025-12471 Eastern Ave, and 2025-1383 Watts Street. They've asked to be continued. Do we have a motion to continue these?
Motion to continue.
Made by Arthur, second. Marilyn, all in favor? Aye. Thank you. The first case in front of us today is 2025-14 for Medford Street, Michael Masucci, for special permit and variance seeking approval of an existing residential structure from a one-family to a two-family structure and the installation of a rear second means of egress, which does not meet the minimum requirements for required lot area, parking spaces, required open space, required side yard setback, and combined side yard setback. This has already been to the planning board, so we can in fact decide this today. Will, can you tell us what the planning board said about this?
Yes, the planning board recommended approval of the special permit with standard conditions as applicable and the kind of standard conditions for a roof deck, not to put any gas grills, umbrellas, et cetera, on top of.
Okay, thank you. Okay, who's here to present this case? Hello, can you please introduce yourself? Name and address.
Mike Masucci.
If you want to pick it up, you can, if it's easier.
Michael Masucci for Medford Street.
Talk to us about what you're proposing, sir.
So I bought this property back in February of this year. I bought it off-market. It had two electric meters and two gas meters. I was under the assumption it was a two-family house, which I was gonna renovate, or I am gonna renovate, and make it two condos. The building department looked into it for me. Back in 1983, it was zoned, rezoned as a single family. Before you are the plans, the first picture here is the basement. It's gonna have a bedroom, full bath, office area. The front office area has to be an office because the front windows in the basement aren't legal sized to have a bedroom. It's gonna have a laundry in the basement with the walkout to the courtyard. The second picture is the front entrance off of Medford Street. You can take a right into the living room, half-bath kitchen area with a set of stairs to the second unit. The second unit is exact layout as the floor below, living room, half-bath kitchen with a set of stairs leading up to the top floor, which will have two bedrooms, a full bath, laundry.
What kind of parking do you have?
There is, as we all know, Medford Street's very congested and tight. There is off-street parking. I'm sorry, street parking only.
Are you making any structural changes to the building?
The only structural change is the existing building has a center stairwell, which is dilapidated. And so we're going to reframe all the joists and move the stairs over to one side. The picture before you here is a spiral staircase, which by law I have to put a second means of egress from the second apartment, the third floor down to the courtyard. We just extended it up to a future roof deck with means of egress on every floor.
Future roof deck, or are you preparing a roof deck as part of your proposal here?
Yes, correct. The second unit will have access to the roof deck. The first unit will have access to the courtyard.
On the lower level, do the office area have a closet on it?
The office area has that. It's a little utility room. That's under the front stairs, the cobblestone stairs.
But it does have a closet.
It's gonna be wide open. It's not gonna be closed off to be made a bedroom. There is a closet there, but it's not gonna be closed off to have a door to get into it. It's gonna be open.
So it will be a closet with no closing doors, but it will be a closet.
It's gonna be a little room, is what you basically think.
Right, this is just gonna be an open room with a storage closet. This is right under the front stairs.
But you mean more like a storage pantry kind of thing, because there's not gonna be a closed door?
Paper, computer, no.
But no door is what?
No door. It's not gonna be a closed closet. I know where he's getting at where it could be turned into a bedroom. It's gonna be wide open.
But then on the doorway, we need to go away, no? On the doorway there, in the plan footprint, there's a door there, showing a door.
So yeah, so what you're saying is that that's inaccurate.
Yeah.
It's inaccurate to have a door there where it says closet.
Okay. I'll just make the laundry room bigger.
No, well, you have a door. It's all he's saying. You tell him there's no door and you're showing him a door.
Oh.
I think what he's trying to say is the office area will not have a door. It's not gonna be a closed-off room. It's just like an open room. But there is a closet that has a door.
Oh, the closet has a door. Okay, that's what we're trying to figure out.
The closet has a door, but there's not gonna be a door to get into the office. It's gonna be wide open.
Oh, okay.
Because otherwise, I know what he's getting at. It's gonna be turned into a bedroom.
But it's a little misleading because there's a door there where the laundry room is. So you see the laundry, there's like a little.
So when you come down the stairs to the basement, this is all wide open.
So the laundry room area has a door.
Right here. It's just gonna be a stackable laundry in the closet, in the hallway. In the office, we'll have a storage closet.
Okay, that makes more sense.
But this is wide open. It's not gonna have a door to get in like a bedroom.
Yeah, it's a little misleading on the floor plan because the door looks like it's open, so it kind of looks like it's for the office area, but in reality, it's for the laundry room, correct?
Yeah, this is, from here to here is all wide open.
Yeah, but right next to it, to the right, where you see the laundry, like the washer?
The door that's, yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is just a laundry closet.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
So the doors that you, I mean, sorry.
No, good.
Are you okay? The stairs that show on the plan, those are for the exterior, for the back, that lead to the.
That's gonna be an exterior spiral staircase.
Not on the exterior.
On the exterior.
Is there any stairs in the interior?
Yes, these are all stairs here.
Just that, right there. Okay, okay.
You go to get other questions? Do you have another question? You go? No? Will, what do we need a variance for in this case?
Variances are needed for minimum lot size, minimum lot size per unit, minimum usable open space, minimum side yard setback, and combined minimum side yard setback. The setbacks, I believe, are triggered by the roof deck, which is just sort of following the structure that's already existing.
So the roof deck is triggering the variance?
The side yard setback. But because, oh, I don't know why that happened, sorry. But because he's converting a single family to a two-family, that then triggers the minimum lot size and minimum lot size per unit.
Okay.
Because the lot is already very small.
Okay. I'm gonna open this to the public. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to this matter, sir? Sir, this is your turn. This is your chance. Please get to the microphone and give us your name and address, and you can ask whatever questions you'd like.
My name is Thomas Johnson. I live at number two Medford Street in Chelsea. These houses are attached brick row houses, Philadelphia style. You may have, let me bring this to your attention, a couple of things. You may have noticed you've only, you sent out a letter to number six, which is on the other side of number four, and the only barrier between these buildings is a firewall, a brick firewall that runs between each building. They're attached. The front is only 18 feet wide. The buildings are 18 by 36. I personally, about 40 some-odd years ago, bought number two and spent nine months gutting out and redoing the building. These buildings all, they were built in the 1850s, so they needed to be, and they were, many of them were done over years ago during the depression. Many were done over. Now, he mentioned he wants to make condos out of these. We have a problem in that neighborhood. The houses on that side, on the even side, are different than the ones on the other side. They're larger on the other side. On the odd side, they have backyards where you can park cars. Behind Medford Street, between Medford, I don't know if you people are familiar with the neighborhood. Are you familiar at all with what it looks like?
Yes.
You are?
Yes.
I can't hear you.
Yes.
Okay. There's an alley. You can't park a car in the back of any of these houses. So each house has 18 feet in which to park a car in front. For example, in my house, I can't park any cars in front of my house right now because since the first of the year, there's been a dumpster there. Not in front of number four, but it's in front of number two. So, and I've had problems already with this Mr. Masucci. He sends people there to do work and there's no supervision whatsoever, none. I've had to, I've had to correct people there that have come there. No foreman, no supervisor. I've had one man dump liquid into my yard. He sends people there to do things, tear out the buildings, and he's put in a new concrete base cellar. There was no original cellar there. They tore out the cellar and they left a mess on the street. About two feet wide, three or four inches high by 15 feet of just dirt that came out of the cellar. And I had to get the truck driver, because there was no supervision, I had to get the truck driver that was driving this dumpster to get them to clean it up. Not only did I catch one man putting, pouring liquid into my yard when they were tearing out, but I caught another man dumping trash into my yard. And boy, did I, not only that, on the front, when they were tearing out, the men that he sent there, they'd leave. Anything they dropped on the ground that didn't go into the dumpster, I ended up cleaning up. Now, number six, the lady who owned number six passed away. So you wouldn't have heard anything, and you will not probably hear anything from number six because she passed away, and I believe it's in litigation, the house. It's also empty. Now, I got this letter, and as I read it, I may be incorrect, but as I read it, the zoning, there's a number of problems with the zoning there, putting a multi-family. And back in the time when they put the zoning correctly, they did it to help the people that lived there. If you override the zoning, then you only, the neighborhood has turned out to be a very nice neighborhood because many people, individuals who've come in there and done houses over for themselves, like myself, all right? If you make it, where are you gonna put all these cars? Now, I take it, he wants to make condos out of it. That would be two separate owners in that one row house. That could possibly bring four cars, two cars for each unit. If a husband and wife buys a unit, there's gonna be two cars today. Same thing, four cars. Maybe not four cars, maybe only two or three cars. Where are you gonna put them? We have problems in the city already. I see what's been happening with the city because of all these apartment buildings. You can't drive through the city anymore without getting stuck in traffic. It's terrible. We're doing the right thing. You think you're doing the right thing by the city, but you're not doing the right thing. You're overcrowding it, and it's gonna be trouble. Not now. It's all, all these apartment buildings are brand new. Now, they, this, this, in the, in the past, Chelsea has a very shaky reputation. And in the past, the old ways to do businesses, if you had a friend in the city, or you paid money, you could override any of the rules and regulations. But I understand that this is the new Chelsea. At least that's what I've heard and read in print. Now, there were multiple things wrong with converting. I got the impression he tried to, he said that this had multiple meters in it. I moved in there, it was a single family. They're paying taxes as a single family. Also, the family that lived there, there were multiple generations, three to four generations lived in that building. They were lovely people. They were old timers. When I moved there about 40 some-odd years ago, nobody wanted to live in that neighborhood. You could buy a house for next to nothing because there were empty places. It was the poorest neighborhood in the city. The city went through a problem and they did a wonderful job. They did over the streets, the sidewalks, put in new sewage, water, did quite a job a number of years ago. Now, the city doesn't care about the neighborhood. They're involved with the apartment buildings. That neighborhood is a wonderful neighborhood. It's been a safe. I never planned on living there for 40 years. I was gonna be gone somewhere after I had done, lived there for a few years. Well, it turned out that it was a very, very safe neighborhood. And I always had the feeling it was safe because it looked like such a poor neighborhood. Nobody wanted to come in there and break in and steal. There's nothing to steal. But as of right now, it's a very nice neighborhood because of the buildings. We do have trouble once in a while. We have multiple buildings that.
So do you have?
Open up into three units, and a lot of second eights, drugs, problems.
So do you have a rec?
So my suggestion is this. In the old days, you could pay somebody to. In the old days, you could pay somebody to override the rules. If, if this doesn't meet the requirements of zoning, don't override the rules, rewrite new rules, and then you're okay. But don't be like the old Chelsea.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
And by the way, would you please have somebody take, there's been a dumpster in front of my house that's been full of trash, not from number four, but for six months, there's been a dumpster in front of my house where nobody could park there.
We'll talk to inspection, we'll have, we'll have somebody talk to Inspection Services, sir.
Hey, and nobody could park there, and it's overrun, run with trash from the neighborhood.
Okay.
Not from number four.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this? There being none, I'm closing the public participation portion of this hearing. Um, are, do we wanna consider this, ladies and gentlemen? Do you wanna consider, so-
Could, could I make a couple corrections?
Sure.
Okay, so, I bought this property back in February. I got the dumpster permit, the permit's good for one year. This gentleman is correct, it takes up part of number two, because the dumpster's big. It's in front of number four, it takes up part of two, but I have a permit for it. I have a demo permit. My demolition contractors, when they started, they called me down there and said, "One of your neighbors is in your house, and he's telling us to stop." So I went down there, this gentleman was on my top floor, causing havoc, telling these guys they gotta stop work, and we needed to speak to him first, and I nicely asked him to remove himself, and he put up a little stink, and then I said, "I'll, I'll have you removed by the police." So he's been a problem ever since. He is correct, I got a fine for the concrete contractor, we redid the basement slab for a footing, because of the condition the building was in. They left, it, they call it an overuse bag, leftover concrete, when they have nowhere to dump, but they put it in a bag, and they're supposed to come back and get it. Well, they never got it. I was unaware of that. I got a three-hundred-dollar fine, I paid it, was removed. That's the only time that I've ever heard any complaints about-
Okay, thank you.
-for Medford Street.
Thank you. So let's, first of all, let's talk through the variance. Where are the variance requirements? You know that, so when it comes, there are, there are conditions for a variance, and there are conditions for a special permit. Look at me.
Oh, sorry.
Conditions for a variance, you have to meet all of them, and we all have to agree. You have, and since there's only four of us, all of us have to agree today. Conditions of a ve, of a special permit, it's different. There's a little more flexibility in that. We'll talk about them, but that you don't have to meet every single one of them. But with the conditions of a variance, you have to meet every single one. So we're gonna go through them one by one, and you're gonna explain to us, and then we will figure out. And so again, we're looking at the variance for the minimum lot size and open space, basically for the roof deck, for all intents and purposes.
The, the side yard setback and combined side yard setback is what the roof deck is triggering?
Mm-hmm.
Converting one unit into a two-unit structure is what then is triggering the minimum lot size, the lot size per unit-
Okay.
...and, uh, open space per unit.
Okay, right, but there's, but we're, all right, that's why I asked if there was anything physically done to the building. So there's been nothing physically done to the building. Okay, the first one. A variance is sought because of soil conditions, shape or topography of such land or structure, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. So does, tell us about that, you know, why do you need this? It's, this is where you say something like, "Well, the building is the building, we're not adding to it, we're not saving, it's just, it's the building is, was the building."
All I'm doing is renovating the interior four walls.
You're not making any changes exterior of the building.
Exterior-wise, there are no changes.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Janice, yes. Second. A literal enforcement of the provisions of this chapter would involve a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to you. A literal enforcement of this would involve a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise.
A hardship towards myself, well, I bought it as, for my children.
Mm-hmm.
When, and, if that time comes, and to renovate it and make it beautiful for the community.
Yeah, but that's, but, so what's the hardship?
The hardship is, I, I have well-invested a few hundred thousand dollars into the building.
So, all right. Hugo?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Janice is yes. Desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good.
There is no detriment to the community.
Usually, you say something like, "We're adding housing, Chelsea needs housing."
We're adding two beautiful condominiums for housing.
Hugo? Arthur?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Yes. Desirable relief may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating for the intent or purpose of this chapter. In other words, you know, you're not doing something against what's intended by residential housing, commercial, whatever it is. It's, you have to answer that. I agree with you enough.
So, all work will be by mass general laws, the building codes.
But it's not taking away from the intent of this chapter, which is for housing, for private housing.
No, negative.
It's furthering it.
It's furthering it, correct.
Hugo?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Marilyn? Janice, okay, so you met those. Now, let's, so, that means those are the four you had to meet. Now, now, we're looking at the special permit primarily for the parking, Will?
So, uh, he needs a special permit, because it's a change to an already-existing non-conforming structure, uh, and then, yes, it's for the number of off-street parking spaces. He's required to have four spaces, uh, and is providing zero.
Yeah, okay. And other, and if he was a one-family, he'd have, he was, two was what was required before.
Yes.
Okay, so let's talk about this. Again, we don't have to all, these, we don't have to meet every one of them, but we do wanna talk about them. The social, economic, or community needs, which, and this is for us to discuss, not so much for, I guess, you guys, you two coming on. Social, economic, or community needs are served by the purpose of this proposal. I mean, housing is housing. I mean, it's, it is, it seems to me that that's consistent with what we said earlier on the variances, is he's providing housing, so that seems to be serving a need of the community.
Yes.
What do you guys think about that?
Well, I'm a little confused. I thought you're selling this as a condo.
I'm not selling.
You're not selling?
Not selling.
Okay. So, do, should we, I, I mean, I think it does. I mean, I think it does. Do you think that it meets this one, number one? Yeah, I mean, this is built, it's-
Yes.
Okay, we all agree on this one. Traffic flow and sa, and safety, including parking and loading. You know, there's never an easy answer. I mean, lo, loading isn't an issue, traffic flow is an issue, parking is always an issue. So, I mean, I don't think that, you know, I think-
It's been, it's resident parking over there, it's always been resident parking.
It's always been, yeah, and there's never-
It's been, yeah, I can remember.
And on the even side, there is, as, as the gentleman who testified said, there is no parking anywhere, so it's not, uh, while I think that it's an issue, it's just, I think-
The other tenant's gonna get the, uh, parking sticker?
No.
They wouldn't be able to get the parking, no, 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 this one, they're not multi, right?
Yeah, so, because it's, it's a existing non-conforming structure, so he's converting one unit into two, and so one unit would be technically considered kind of grandfathered, uh, and so the u, the one-bedroom unit will be the unit that's ineligible-
Ineligible.
-for the city's par, residential parking sticker program. So, one, the one-bedroom unit, which is like the, the basement and first floor, uh, will not get the parking stickers. The other unit should be eligible to park on the street.
So, so that would be, yeah, so, so we're adding two, but that's, I mean, I don't see that as a, as a bait, a deal-breaker, if you will. Adequacy of utilities and other public services, I don't think that's an issue.
No.
Neighbor, and, and I'm just saying, so, again, you can disagree, whatever. Neighborhood, character, and social structures, it seems consistent with the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Yeah? Impacts on the natural environment, including drainage, we've heard nothing to the contrary. Potential fiscal impact, including impacts on city services, tax base, and employment, no more than any, I mean, any other single or duplex would. Four uses in, well, Port District's not a Port District, okay. So I think that it seems to me as though at, they meet the majority of the criteria for special permit. So what is the planning department's recommendation, Mr. Cecchio?
Uh, the department recommends approval. Uh, it does meet the general intent of the zoning, you know, single and two-family units are allowed in the R1 district. Many of the other, um, properties have been putting up roof decks, I mean, and that's kind of why the, uh, some of the variances are being triggered. He's not demolishing an entire building and rebuilding it. He's really just renovating the inside and then adding a roof deck on top, so I mean, the department-
Well, I, I think we just need to make sure that if we're gonna talk, do they have a, do you have proposed, um, conditions?
Yeah, I mean, the, the proposed conditions are standard conditions as applicable, petitioner is not permitted to place or use gas grills and/or umbrellas on the roof deck, uh, the one-bedroom unit shall be ineligible for the city's on-street parking sticker program, and the roof deck must not be visible from any public way.
Okay, that's why I wanted to be sure that we had talked about the needs for the roof deck. With that being said, do we have a motion? Marilyn?
Okay, I make a motion to, um, approve, um, twenty, twenty-five dash fourteen for Meds, Medford Street with special permit conditions and-
With the conditions as articulated.
Yes, yes, correct.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. It'll take a couple of weeks, they have to write it up, people have the right to appeal, blah, 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 so you can't proceed to do anything until the write-up and you'll, until you hear from the planning board.
Okay.
Until you hear from the planning board, okay?
Thank you very much.
Next case, twenty-twenty-five dash fifteen, eighty-two Clinton Street, Maria Cartagena for special permit and variance, seeking approval to construct a rear addition and deck, which does not meet the minimum requirements for required combined yard setback and required side yard setback. As with the last one, this one has already gone to the planning board, and so we can, if we are in, so inclined, decide this today. Hello, please sit down and introduce yourselves, and before you do, Will, what did the planning board, the planning board say about this?
The planning board recommended approval, uh, and added the only condition, uh, that all lighting does not shine directly onto abutting properties, and is compliant with international dark-skies standards.
Okay. Um, and to, please introduce yourselves and, um, and talk, and introduce us to your project.
Um, this is Maria.
Pick up your, pick up the-
This is Maria, and then I'm her son, here to help translate for everything that's-
And your, what tells your last, your name as well?
Hamilton J O J.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and where you-
And you're already eighty-two Clinton Street?
Um, twenty.
Okay, okay, um, so you're gonna, so, um, you can either translate for your mother or speak on her behalf, and she can say and hit you if you've done the wrong thing, but, um, see, she can understand that, that what I get.
Yes.
And, um, so, because we haven't heard about your project, so describe to us what you're proposing here.
Um, so our plan is to, uh, make a deck, but, or no, for, uh, the backyard, and then to extend, and to extend their room a bit bigger as well.
Okay, and how big are we talking? What, how much space are you adding? What is the, what is, do you know, Will, can you tell by the? We're trying to figure out how much, how many feet you're adding.
Yeah.
Do you know how many feet you're adding?
Uh, they, she said that they, that you guys have the papers to, that already-
Right, that's what we're looking at.
Yeah.
And this is your house, right?
Yes.
This is where you live? And you said you wanted, you wanna extend the rear, your, your master bedroom-
Yes.
-and then add a deck on the master bedroom, or a deck for the whole house?
Uh, for the master bedroom, is what I'm saying.
Okay, so you walk out of the bedroom onto the deck?
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
I know they are trying to construct a twelve-by, a twelve-foot by six-foot deck.
Okay.
And then a three-by-seven-foot extension to the rear.
That's what I was trying to figure out.
Thank you, yeah, yeah, sorry.
Okay, that's, so, so that's all, yeah, so, three by seven, so, so we're talking fifteen feet out total, and then, and are we extending on the sides at all?
Yeah, the variances that they need are side yard setback and combined minimum-
So they're going out beyond the, the footprint of the building, beyond the width of the building?
Yeah, a little bit, yes.
Okay, okay. Does that, so, so fifteen feet out, and about, about a little longer than the length of your building now?
Yes.
Is that, okay. Do you have any questions?
Um, this is a single family, correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Gentlemen? Are, Hugo, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, this is the first, this is the public, um, participation portion. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak on this? There being none, I'm closing the public participation portion of this. We need to go through the variances, so you know how we just did with that guy before you?
Right.
Because you're looking for variances. And again, the variances are for side yard setback?
And combined side yard setback.
Okay.
Before we do that, I'm sorry.
Good.
Can we just, why does she wanna extend the bedroom? Like, what's the reasoning?
Cause it, yeah, cause, um, her and her husband share the room, so it's, there's not enough room for both of their stuff to be in there. His stuff is in the laundry room right now.
Oh, okay, okay. Is it a little room?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Also, just to clarify, my fault. So, they aren't extending the width of the house, really, they're just extending-
Into the back.
Into the back.
That's what I'm thinking.
But then that triggers the side yard setback.
Because on that way, on that side, yes, okay.
Yes, yes. So it's not like they're widening the house.
They're not going beyond the, the length of the house, that's what, that's what it didn't, didn't make sense to me. Okay, so, let's go to the variances, we're gonna have to go through these. The variance is sought because of soil conditions, shape or topography of such land or structure, and especially affecting such land or structure, but not generally affecting the zoning district. So, you're looking for this, you, you want, you need this because if you wanna build anything, you're, the building, the land isn't big enough, if you, how, how far is it to, what's, how much set, yeah, yard, backyard setback do we have now, after they put this in, do you know?
Give me a second to look it up, but, I don't know off the top of my head.
Come on.
That's my fault.
That was, no, it's not your fault. Um, so, the variance is sought because of soil conditions, shape, or topography of the land. So, you're not, you, the land is small, you can't do anything if you don't, there, there's nothing you can do, basically.
It's, it's, in a sense, asking like, what is unique about the lot? Whether it's soil conditions, the shape of this parcel-
The shape of it says you can't-
...the topography.
You couldn't build anything, if you tried to build anything there, you would create all of these triggers, so the shape is what's making, is creating the triggers.
Right.
Yes.
Hugo?
Um, yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Yes. The enforcement of provisions would provide a fin, a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise. It sounds to me like your husband might be happy for you to get a bigger bedroom, but, so would this be, um, what kind of hardship would this be?
Um-
To not have this?
I, I'm sorry, excuse me?
You need, it, like, what makes it difficult? Is it, um, you know, if, if we, to, if we didn't allow you to do this, what would, what would happen?
Um, well, he'd have to still keep his, he'd have to get out of his room in order to change after showering and stuff like, and stuff like that, cause his dresses and stuff-
So it's, so the hardship here would be financial, it'd be, it's personal?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. Nobody's getting hurt.
Nobody.
Yes, yes.
Yes. Desirable relief may be granted without getting, dealing, getting away from the purpose of this chapter. You're not, you're not negating, you're not adding multiple families, you're not doing anything.
Yes.
Yes.[1746.33]
Yes.
Now, let's look, let's look at the special permit. And the special permit we're looking for is for what?
They need a special permit because they are making a change to an existing non-conforming structure.
Oh, I hate those. The socioeconomic or community needs, needsy, needs which are served by the proposal. I mean, it's not, it's not getting in the way of anything. It's their backyard.
Yeah, it's not bothering anyone.
Yeah, it's not bothering anybody. It's not, it's not adding traffic, it's not adding parking, it's not doing any of that stuff. It's not adding utilities or other public services. I, it doesn't seem like it's in the way of the character of the neighborhood or the social structures in the area. There seems no, nobody's talking about drainage as an issue.
There's no flooding or anything like that in the back?
No. And there's no impact on city services, tax base or employment, I would think. I think that these are fine. What do you think?
Okay.
Okay, do we have, just, are there conditions proposed by the planning board?
Yeah, the only-
Planning department?
The only conditions are to ensure that all lighting does not shine directly on abutting properties.
And did you, you heard that, right?
Yeah.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion-
Peter?
Yep. To approve case 2025-15, 82 Clinton Street for special permit and variances to seek approval to construct a rear addition and deck with the-
With the condition articulated, okay. Do I have a second? Second, Marilyn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, have fun.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, it'll take us like about two weeks to write up the decision, we'll file it with the city clerk, and then, once we file it, there is a 21-day appeal period where anybody can appeal the decision, and after that appeal period, you know, passes and no one's appealed it, you'll be able to, you know, meet the conditions necessary and then get your building permit to keep going.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next one, 2025-16, 155 Crescent Ave, Ever Nunez Chavez for special permit seeking approval for a proposed taxi livery parking facility. Again, as with the previous two cases, this has already been to the planning board, and they've decided it, and we can, if we choose to, decide it today. What was the recommendation of the planning board, Will?
The planning board recommended approval of the special permit and to, basically, the uses for, you know, storage of vehicles. If the petitioner wishes to store more vehicles on-site than the number of parking spaces approved, they must have, they have to, just have to return back to the board for a modification to do that.
Okay.
But, so, generally, recommended approval.
Okay. All right, so why don't you introduce yourself, please, and describe your project?
Sure. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Attorney James O'Shea on behalf of Ever Nunez Chavez. Ever opened this business as a printing company right in the middle of the pandemic. Part of that business was car wrapping, and as you can see, he's got about 27 spaces there. The problem was that he, the car wrapping business and the printing company are not doing well. Fortunately, Ever has several other businesses, including a livery business. He has a total of 15 livery vehicles which wouldn't even take up, which is a little more than half of what the space he has here now. He's not looking to make any changes, but the property and the business that's operating there is hemorrhaging money. He's paying $8,200 in rent to his landlord for the property on a 10-year lease, and he's not able to make that up out of the printing company business, but the livery company is doing very well. So, all he's seeking is to be able to park these vehicles in this area, and when we presented to the planning board and they approved this, one of the things they noted was this area in Crescent Street is, not only is the property open to this type of business where he's got, like I say, he'd be parking just a little more than half of, using half the spaces for livery vehicles, but it's set up in an area that, that really wouldn't have any impact whatsoever on the area of the neighborhood. It's zoned commercial and set up essentially for this purpose. So, while his first business wasn't working, the business that he's seeking to operate with these vehicles would certainly allow him to continue to paying a significant amount, $8,200 in rent, not including the utilities and insurance, and it really wouldn't change anything. If his, for example, if his printing company was booming, there could be up to 27 cars there at any given time, right? So, we're really not changing anything in that respect in terms of the traffic, because the original business was set up to be able to accommodate that many cars.
Okay. Questions? I'm gonna open this up, is there anyone here, this is the public participation portion of the hearing, is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this? There being none, I'm closing the public participation portion of this. I have a couple of questions, Will. One of the things we generally talk about when we have these kinds of facilities is we make sure that they don't do any washing or anything outside, outside. So, if we're going to approve this, I think that would be in a condition that we'd want to include, because in the past, whenever, you know, we don't want them washing it or any of that kind of stuff outside. This has always been a parking lot, right? I mean, it's been a parking lot primarily.
Yeah, yeah, it's really, the special permit is to go from like one non-conforming use to another non-conforming use, at least that's how we're treating it. Yeah, it is a parking lot, that whole kind of area of like Crescent Ave are a lot of parking lots, so, yeah.
Okay. So, we have to go through the special permit requirements?
Which building is he using for office or shop?
Which shop?
Which, which building is he using?
Which building is the printing shop?
You can stand up and point.
The fire, on the fire, right?
Any mechanical work in the shop?
Just the wrapping of cars was the only mechanical work. They're really not even operating the, the printing company at this point, because it's really not doing any business.
No, I'm talking about his cars, he, the one he plans to park in, in this lot. Is he gonna do some mechanical work?
No. No, in fact, he just opened another business in, it was in East Boston, Winthrop, my apologies. He opened a, a shop in, in Winthrop that is a mechanic shop. An existing use there.
No change in oil or anything?
Nothing, no.
Okay.
So, no mechanical work, no washing machine, no washing of the vehicles?
Right.
Let's go through the special permit stuff. Social economic or community needs which are served by the proposal, it's not hurting anything. I mean, it's, it's consistent with the area. Traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading, parking isn't an issue in, again, the area, it's consistent with the area. Adequacy of utilities and other public services, doesn't seem like they'd be adding any. Neighborhood character and social structure is consistent with the neighborhood area. Impacts on the natural environment, including drainage, again, they won't be allowed to be washing vehicles or anything, so they wouldn't be have, other than natural drainage, which you would already be taking into account when they, when it was a previous garage, previous parking lot. Potential fiscal impact, including impacts on city services, tax base and employment.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion on this?
I make a motion to accept case 2025-16, 155 Crescent Ave.
With the standard, and then, and if they ask, they can't, if they try to park more than the number of parking spaces, they have to come back to us. No washing of vehicles, no mechanical work done on-site.
Right.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, there's, the next two cases, we're gonna be continuing to our November hearing, which again, I should have made clear at the beginning of this-
Thank you so much.
-is November 12th, Wednesday. The November meeting is Wednesday.
Okay.
The 12th.
Oh, because?
Because 11th is the holiday.
Okay.
So, one, so we have 2025-17, which is 124, 126 Pearl Street, and 2025-18, 9 Madison Avenue. We are looking to continue, Arthur, I know that you're recu, you're recused from 20, to hearing 2025-17, but that you are not, you can still vote on administrative, administratively. So, do I have a motion to move those two?
I make a motion.
And second?
Second.
Marilyn, all in favor?
Aye.
The next case in front of us is 2025-19, 403 to that, to 405 Broadway, New Properties LLC for special permit and variance seeking approval for the conversion of an existing residential space on the third floor from one residential unit to two residential units, with first floor and second floor space remaining commercial, which does not meet the minimum requirement for rear yard setback, usable open space and off-street parking. This is the first time we'll be hearing this, we will not be deciding it today. This will go to the planning board on the 28th of October, and then back here again on Wednesday, November 12th. Not the usual Tuesday, Wednesday, November 12th. So, please introduce yourselves and your project.
Good evening, James Cipolletta, 5 Fremont Street, and Winthrop attorney for the property owners along with the architect who I would ask me to address the zoning board.
David Choi, David Choi, architect.
So, good evening. As is shown on the, on the screen, this is a request to alter or expand a pre-existing non-conforming structure and, and for variance as pointed out by the ISD director in his zoning review letter. So, what, what the plan will show is that currently there is a one fam, a single unit on the second floor, which is a fairly large unit, that the owner wishes to cut in half so as to create two units, thereby establishing additional housing within the structure. Secondly, there would be an extension of the commercial use, which is a restaurant, which also is carried out on the second floor and would be carried out within the footprint of the existing building. The third, as is pointed out by the zoning review letter created by the ISD director, is that there are variances required. Now, this is a building that is on a very narrow lot, it's built lot line to lot line, there is no parking. They point out correctly that it is impossible to comply with parking regulations as the building is sitting the way it is situated on, on the lot, which is, looks to be from the 30,000-foot view, about the narrowest built lot out of the subdivision in, in, in that area. No additional construction will be taking place outside the existing footprint of, of the building. The benefits, obviously, to the community, and number one, is to create one additional housing unit, maybe for a smaller family or for a lesser cost. Also, to expand the thriving business on the second floor, which would allow the owner to use that additional space for functions. So, and that also would be carried out within the, the footprint of, of the building, thereby creating no further non-conformities of, of the building footprint into the dimension.
So, the first floor is tu casa?
Yes, it is.
Yes. And the ups, and the second floor is currently used by the restaurant or not?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes, it is, yes.
Is, and it, it's used for actual diners, or it's used for storage, or what's it used for?
It's actually very underutilized.
Yeah, but that's not what I'm asking. What's, what, what is it currently intended to be used for?
There's a connecting stair and it's a function room, but it's, again, it's not, not utilized.
When it, if you want to come up, are you part of the petitioner? Or you wanna, I mean, if you-
Yes, she is, those are the owners.
Well, then you can come, you ask the owner, you can come up and introduce yourselves and tell us what's going to happen.
Sorry, right now it's used for-
Your name and address.
This Luisa Bedoya.
Mm-hmm.
It's used for weddings, for first communions, for street fifties.
So, it's currently used as a function space?
As a function space.
And you want to enlarge the function space?
Enlarge, to create it like more beautiful, like a little space on the side.
But you're not changing the use, you're just changing, you're just making it-
No, no, it's because right now with the economy, the way it is, people are looking for a smaller space, like Paris are now, less people now, it's like 30 people, they don't want to rent it.
So, you want to make it a multi, a multi-use function space?
Yeah, that, that's what we're trying to use.
But you're not changing the use at all?
No, no, that's okay. Thank you.
That's okay. I'm sorry. And upstairs is, you want to turn from one, one, one residential to two residential?
Yes, that's correct. They're not adding any floor space, any livable space, taking what the square footage of that area is, slicing it in half, and creating two smaller units.
If I may speak, if I may speak. So, again, under, when I, when I say underutilized, I mean, it's not 100% occupied on the second floor. When I say underutilized on the third floor, I mean, you go in there and it's a rather large, oversized residential unit where it's very much cavernous for the, you know, function of having natural daylight into the middle of, and it's just the na, the nature of the way that the building was laid out in a downtown, you know, business central district, where you have a narrow lot, you have a lengthy building, and I think the proposal to split it into two is a better architectural solution.
So, when you, so you're gonna, you want to split it into, so you've got one in the front and one in the back?
Yes, madam. So, the idea is that it would make that livable space more livable and, and more habitable, better function in terms of natural light from both sides. So, architecturally, I, I think that it's a better solution than what it is now. So, I, I would, just as an architect, not, not speaking about the zoning, architecturally, I think the solutions, the solution that I would bring as an architect is a betterment to the building interior.
Okay. Questions?
What, what size are the units? Are they like studio apartments, one bedrooms?
I believe they're one bedrooms.
One, two bedrooms?
One to two, yeah, two bedrooms, and then one in the back. Somehow this is not showing, this right here, one to two bedroom is in the front, as you could see.
Bedroom two, bedroom one, yeah. It looks like they both have two bedrooms.
It looks like a three-bedroom there, on the front.
So, that one to the back is actually facing out to the back.
Okay.
The one in the front is facing out to the, it's Broadway.
Which one's on Broadway, the three-bedroom or the two-bedroom?
The two-bedroom is on the Broadway side.
And the third bedroom's in the back, okay. So, how big, that doesn't answer the question, what's the square footage on, is that what you're looking for?
No, just wanted to know.
Oh, the size, oh, okay.
Yeah, well, yeah.
So, 600 in the front, and then it will be in the range of 900 to the back.
Are you planning on doing anything, like, on the property itself, like the structure? Like, the front of the property, like, you're gonna add more windows for lighting?
It has, it has enough-
It has enough windows?
Yeah, yeah, in the front, and certainly in the back as well, it's just that-
Cause it's-
Narrow, but then-
Yeah, narrow, and it's, I'm trying to think of where it is, I think the old bakery was next to it, if I'm correct?
Yeah.
The, the what?
Liquor store next to it.
Oh, the liquor store, okay.
The cell phone store.
Okay, okay, okay.
The windows, they're already big.
Okay. If you gotta talk, you gotta talk into the microphone.
It's just, I know the property more than, it's like five big, four to five big windows, that's gonna help with the natural light, light. So, the reason to share the apartment is because now with the way it is, it's so difficult to rent the big apartments, it's almost impossible. Nobody wants to live with more people, and we don't want to have that, like, you know, they bring the strangers, we'd rather to know who's living there instead of having people, who's gonna rent bedrooms and things like that, we don't want to deal with that.
Yes.
Luisa, for the record, what you said, I don't know if it was picked up on the microphone, could you state what you said, where the property was located? Was it, you know, what was the property that was there? You said the liquor store, you know?
Next door to the left is the-
Yeah, cause you, when you said it, you said it on the bench, so it wasn't heard, so for the record, could you say it again? What you just said in the beginning?
Where we located?
But when you were sitting down, could you just repeat it again?
Okay, on the left is the liquor store, I think the name is Caribbean Liquor or something like that, and on the right it's a cell phone store?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And also, the building would be sprinkled, would have to be sprinkled, just to give another idea, so what we did here-
Pick it up, if you're gonna talk.
Just, just for the board to understand, what we did here is we're indicating just basically a minimum change, right, in, in the highlighted black walls, if you will, right? So, the change is so minimal, and, and in terms of, like, what they have now, and how they're gonna get a more livable, more functional apartment unit, because effectively, this whole area of, you could see, in the range of close to 700 square feet, is effectively a big hall, big, big space that currently is, you go, you walk in there and it really doesn't feel like, like an apartment home, it feels more like a function hall that was left, and I don't-
Show us where the line's gonna be dividing the buildings, dividing the apartments.
Yeah, so if you go back to the other slide, yeah, so, the front unit, this, this is the line of division, this is the existing stair, as, will remain as is. So, we're not, we're not changing this there, we're not changing this wall, we are adding this wall here to create two bathrooms.
And where would their entry door be?
The entry door to this unit would be off the stair here to this, this back unit. Entry to the front Broadway unit would be at the same existing stair.
You said that was the Broadway unit?
So, this is the Broadway side. I apologize if I'm not pointing.
So, it's the two bedrooms on Broadway?
Yeah, yeah. So, and then this, this is the backside, quote unquote. But as you could see, what we're doing is essentially adding bathrooms and, and kitchens in the middle cavernous area of, of the building, so.
So, it's a shared entryway?
Existing shared entry.
And then the door on one side and then, okay.
Right, right. So, it's really trying to be as minimal to the layout, current layout, but maximum to the livability of the two units, so.
And that entrance from Broadway, those stairs?
The stair goes all the way down.
To Broadway?
Yeah, to, to Broadway. There is on the Broadway side, on the street, there is an entry here dedicated to the residential, whereas here, on, on the Broadway lower side, it's dedicated to the retail. So, it's your classic mixed use where you have entry for the restaurant and then you have the entry for the apartments. But the fact of the matter is, the, the owner has a large cavernous apartment on the top floor that is just not characteristic of a downtown apartment unit. So, if I may say, say that. I know that's a qualifying statement, but I just.
We got it, we got it.
Thank you.
Anything else before I open it up?
So, there's no form of egress on the back, in the back? There's no like, um, fire escape or?
There is an existing fire escape, um, and we'll maintain that, we'll fix that up. However, um, the building code does allow for single means of egress up to three levels, so this would be maxed out. So, the building code does not allow to go higher than this. It's, um, it's maxed out. They, they, they've been alerted to that. So, uh, the sprinkler system would be extended, uh, to cover for the, the two units. So, it would be made safer than it is now, let's just say that, by, by using, applying the latest code.
Okay.
So, the restaurant has two entrances, one in front of the Broadway, one in the back?
One in the back is a service entrance.
Okay.
And it's, um, it's primarily for the kitchen. It's, they're, they're not proposing to change any of that at all. The, the restaurant on the first floor will remain the same function, the same, um, egress in and out. You could actually egress on the, in the first floor, egress through the kitchen. There is a path out from Broadway to the back, um, currently. And also, the second floor also gets a stair from the second floor to the back kitchen. So, they could egress out from there as well. Second floor does have two means of egress. It's just the third floor, uh, has existing fire escape, which they will repair and maintain. But that doesn't, that's not, uh, it, it's, they're still required to have the sprinkler coverage for the single means of egress because according to building code, fire escape is an escape, it's not a, an egress. So, it is allowed to have, they're allowed to have, have, um, the, you know, it, it, let's just say that when, when the building department reviewed it, um, there weren't any building code violations that they cited. So, I think we're, we're within the, uh, the building code, uh, to make this safer.
And, and those three, those three bedrooms will go on top of the restaurant in the back?
So, actually the, um, quote unquote, the top is actually below here, so that the, the masonry footprint of the existing will not change. So, they're not proposing to extend the third floor back, they're just.
He's asking if it's just above the restaurant, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, yes, yes, sir. Yep, it is above.
Those are bedrooms will go on top of the restaurant?
Above the restaurant use, above the function, yes, exactly. Above the function area, which now they're wanting to.
Will be extended.
Yeah, because of the fact that it's not a, it's underutilized and not, not as functional now.
Any other questions before I open it up? Um, okay, is there anyone here who wishes to speak to this? I'm not closing the public participation portion of this because you'll be back in front of us here on the twelfth of November. And as I said, you'll be going to the planning board to make your presentation to them on October twenty eighth. That'd be here, Will, in this, in this bill, in this room. Okay?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
The next one, twenty twenty-five dash twenty, fifty-nine to sixty-one Cary Ave, Roy Gillo, Gillo, for special permit and variance seeking approval to establish two additional residential units by constructing a third floor above the existing residential space, which does not meet the minimum requirements for side yard setback, third rear yard setback, usable open space, off-street parking, front yard setback, lot size and maximum requirements for density, floor area ratio and lot coverage. As with the previous case, we will not be deciding this today because we, we'll have to go to the planning board on October twenty eighth and you will be back here on November twelfth, Wednesday, November twelfth. So, please introduce yourselves and tell us about your project.
Hello, my name is Raquel Gillo.
I am Roy Gillo, the owner.
And your address?
Uh, we live in ninety Pinnacle Street, Tewksbury.
Okay.
Um, so here we have fifty-nine Cary Ave, um, it's a property that my father has owned for quite some time now. It is currently a multifamily home, consists of, um, four units and he just wanted to add two units on top.
What, he wants to build on the top?
Yes. So, nothing is being changed on the size, we're just going up.
Okay. And you're matching the footprint of what's below?
Yes. Wanna talk about the footprint, blueprint?
Questions?
How many bedrooms?
Five, it's gonna be three.
I mean, if you're gonna talk, I'm gonna bring that, bring that with you. It comes out, there you go.
So, um, this is the front, this is the front entrance right here, right? So, um, we're gonna have that side by side, right? That's gonna be, uh, a kitchen open with the, uh, with the living room. That's gonna be a bathroom, bathroom.
Three bedrooms on both sides? Is that, is it three bedroom? Two units?
Two units.
Three bedrooms on, at both sides? Are they, are they just basically exactly the same on each side? And how big is that? How, what's the, how big are those? Is it, is it a big spot?
That's, uh, I can see it too much.
That's okay, that's all right.
Can you see this number right here?
Where's, where are the bathrooms located, I'm sorry? Where are the bathrooms located on the floor plan?
The bathrooms is right here, side by side.
Oh, right there, okay, okay, okay.
Also, just to provide some context, I believe there was a fire on the third floor like years ago and it's, they essentially want to like kind of re-put back the units that were burned. I think you can kind of see in the existing photos that the third floor almost looks like it was half chopped off, uh, cause the fire destroyed that portion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other, you go?
Yeah, um, is there parking on this property?
We're gonna try to have two parks, two or three of them, I think, like chosen the plan.
How many do you have now?
Nothing.
So, where do you plan on putting the parking?
It's on the side.
Pick up the phone, pick up the mic. Will, do you can see it?
It's right here. We have, I think it's about sixteen or seventeen feet from here to the ne, to the neighbor
Well, okay, but that's not, those are not, that doesn't look like it's legit parking, no?
Yeah, we, we would also, I think we need a site plan. I don't believe we've gotten a site plan.
Okay, so we get, we would need a site plan for the parking. Questions?
Would he come before us for that or like, would that be included on this?
They need to do that.
Okay.
That's, I mean, that's what he's saying is we need, if you want parking and you want to get some relief from parking, then you have to show us how, on a site plan, how you want to propose parking. Because what you're proposing is a couple of things that we need approval for. You're proposing tandem parking, which isn't, it's not unheard of, it's just we need to approve tandem parking and it sounds to me like you might be kind of close to the walls.
Now, i- is that parking like existing already? Is it already used as parking currently?
No.
No, okay. Yeah, so we'll need a site plan showing where you want to locate your parking spaces and so we're able to kind of assess whether or not those are the proper dimensions for a parking space. Um, it also looks like you'd be, um, you'll need relief for the location of the spaces being within five feet of a side lot line. So, I think that would be definitely useful for the planning board meeting coming up.
Well, plus I think it's also, it looked like it was next to, um, fire escape. So, I think that, yeah. Yeah, so it looks like on the side you're next to, if you want, if, and you know, and plus you don't have a curb cut. Right? So, anyway, if you, if, again, if you're not, if you're not proposing parking, we'll take that into consideration when we're making our recommendation. If you are proposing parking, then we need to see what you're proposing.
Well, if it's possible not to have the park, it's better for us.
Well, that's up to you to decide.
Because it's gonna be very tight.
I mean, you're gonna, you need relief from parking no matter what. You need to decide whether or not, uh, you know, whether or not, how much you want to propose you need relief for. Cause they would with two additional, they have no parking now, right, Will?
Yeah, they have zero parking now and they, with the addition of these two units, you would need twelve parking spaces.
So, you would need a total of twelve parking spaces?
A total of twelve, they have zero.
And you have nothing. So, you gotta figure out if adding a couple there is gonna make a difference. Only you can do that. You have to make a decision on whether or not it's worth proposing that to us and getting the plans, et cetera. Because if you're proposing parking, then we need plans. If you're just proposing to say, listen, I don't have twelve parking spaces, then you don't need another plan. You just need, you know, well, you're asking for relief for twelve parking spaces as opposed to ten parking spaces. I mean, that's really kind of what, if all you have room for there is ten parking, two parking spaces, you're still gonna need relief, special permit relief, no matter what.
Right.
So, you're either gonna need for ten, for twelve, or twelve minus whatever you're proposing over there. You're gonna need relief one way or the other. So, you guys need to decide personally whether or not that's an expense you want to go to or whatever, that's your choice. But if you're, if you want to use park, if you, if proposing parking, cause you think that's what you really want, then you need a plan for it. So, you guys have to consider that.
Right.
Okay? And that's not first to consider. You go?
Yeah, how many entrances does the building have?
About right now.
Pick up the microphone, no.
Sorry, sorry.
We have the front stairs, right? And then we have the fire escape on the back.
It's a fire escape or not?
Fire escape, yep. See it right here?
Does this fall into the same category as the earlier one, Will? It doesn't need two means of egress because it's not above three, three flights?
I, I don't know building code as much. I would have to check on that, but it, it could be, I can, I can.
Yeah, I mean, well, that would, granted, that's not within our, I guess, our range, but.
But I can check with, uh, the building inspector.
You're on? Anything else?
No.
Okay, um, I'm gonna open this to the public. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this? There being none, I am not closing the public participation portion of this. You have to go to the planning board on the twenty-eighth of Nov, of October and by then you should decide what you want to do about parking. And back here on Wednesday, November twelfth, okay? Because the questions, if you mention parking to the planning department, planning board, they're gonna do the same thing that we just did. Well, where is it? Where's the plan? Where's the whatever? If you don't mention parking, then they're, then, then that's okay, you don't mention parking. I mean, that's, and I, and I'm not, and I'm not being flip, I'm just saying you're making a decision as to what makes sense for you and we're gonna be considering, again, we're gonna have to consider, you don't meet parking on this no matter what proposed, so.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and feel free to stop by our office and we can like talk this through and see what makes sense, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the other thing, we have a couple of, of cases, um, one of which we have to determine if these cases are major or minor. Let's type, let's take them one at a time. Twenty eighteen dash sixty-one seventy-six, one seventy-eight Washington Ave, originally requesting a modification of the approved permit, special permit and variances. The modification is to convert the ground floor retail space to a personal service establishment. The request was amended on Sept, in September by the petitioner who now seeks to, seeks to convert the community area into an additional residential unit and convert the twelve hundred square foot of retail space on the ground level to a personal service establishment. Why don't you clarify that clarification for us?
Sure, it was just.
Introduce yourselves, please.
It's, sure. Peter Brown and Alma Chiata from Brown Legal to Oliver Street in Boston. It was just a, 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 a mis, a mis sentence in the original application that just wasn't covered. The original application, as we discussed, uh, with Mr. DePreez before we filed, was to do two things. One, to go and convert our existing community room to a two-bedroom apartment and secondly, to take the commercial, uh, retail that's down on the first floor, that's currently sitting vacant and to turn that into a personal service establishment through the construction of a hair salon, which would be eight individual, uh, salons inside instead of eight separate chairs. So, that is the request that is being made. Our request to you, well, first, let me introduce our full team. I have the property owner here, Andreas Sistos, who's the member of the LLC from United Property Management. This has been his property that he acquired after the permitting, um, but he has rented and been managing it and he has over a hundred buildings in all of our surrounding areas in Malden, Saugus and Everett and all around and has an outstanding, uh, reputation. So, we're very proud to be here on his behalf this evening. The first thing we're asking for is a determination that our proposal constitutes a minor modification and if the board were to agree, we would ask you to go and approve it. Let me start with what we're not asking for and, and I think that's a helpful way of determining whether it's minor or it's major, or at least helpful for the board. We're not adding to the building footprint. We're not seeking to reduce any parking that has been granted, uh, to us and we are not proposing any use that's not already allowed as of right in the BR two district. So, what we're seeking to do is to take the nine hundred foot community room, it's really being, you know, underutilized, it's not, didn't fit the ideal of what we were going and trying to do and add a twenty-fifth unit. Our original permit was approved for twenty-four units.
So, you only want to add one unit?
Just one unit.
One unit, not two units?
One unit, two bedrooms, one bath. So, and again, that's already, that, that premises already exists. We're not adding to the internal footprint at all, no structural changes. We're just simply looking to go and add that unit. The second thing that we're asking to go and do is to take what's currently not being utilized at all on the retail, which is if you're looking at the building from Washington Ave, it's on the, sitting on the left-hand side, we're not looking to expand the footprint at all, we're just looking to take that twelve hundred feet, put it to good use through a personal service establishment. Importantly, the personal service establishment under the zoning, which falls within a hair salon, doesn't require any additional parking than does retail. So, that was, in our view, kind of all factored in within the decision that was received when the building was first constructed. The good news here is that the boards, in their wisdom, saw that this was a property that was developed around public transit, um, factoring in the need to go and add housing, the, you know, the lesser likelihood that there would be a tremendous amount of vehicular traffic and use of cars and that's what our experience has been, which is good. Not all of the tenants sit there and have cars, we're not at max capacity in the garage. The garage has two levels and it's currently serving all of the units and, uh, not having any issues. Our request.
That's true, Will?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay.
Our, our, our request is that you treat this as minor and that you approve it without any additional parking, uh, requirements. But I will say to you, I think it's perfectly, it would, would certainly wouldn't be unreasonable for the board to sit there and say, you're adding, you're adding a unit, you're adding a.
We generally don't do that. We generally, if it's minor, it's minor. We don't make changes. If it's minor, it's minor.
Right.
Okay? So, don't ask for something that may not make it into something that you don't want it to be.
We, we, we believe it is and we believe the end of the day, the approval that was provided gave us one parking, gave us one parking, uh, one parking relief. We required thirty-seven, you brought it down to thirty-six and gave us other things that allowed the building to go and be constructed. We don't believe these changes are gonna warrant any additional traffic or harm to the community that would require anything additional for the building. We think it's a, a, a good building in the, in the area. We think it has been a positive project. I know it's very well-run, um, and we think we would just have a better building and be a better contribution to the neighborhood with these changes.
Okay, thoughts? I think it's minor.
Yes, I think it's minor too.
You go? Minor, major?
Minor.
Sure, of course I have questions.
And regards to the personal service establishment, would that be just for the residents that live in the building? Or is that for like the public?
That would be for the public.
They said hair salon.
Okay. There are many hair salon rooms? Is that?
Yeah, like rent a chair.
Like you rent a chair, kind of like, okay.
Exactly, but instead of having an open area where you just had eight chairs,
Yeah.
they would kinda create these little pods where each person would have their area. But it'd be one, it'd be one common entrance. And we think it's a, it's a nice way, and Andreas has seen this with his other mixed-use properties, of a nice way of activating, of activating the street and serving the purpose of what the retail, or what we hope the retail would have done. So we think it'll be a nice addition, certainly better than it's sitting vacant and not doing anything, uh, for the building and the neighborhood.
Okay, minor then.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to, um.
It's minor?
To say it's minor.
Second, second, Yaron, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's minor. Fun. 2022-09.
Real quick, Jen, sorry. So we'll just write up a letter saying at a, you know, duly posted meeting, the board determined it to be minor, just for your files and ours, and then you can move on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. 2022-09, 157, Washington Ave. Requesting a modification of the approved special permit and variances. The modification is for the addition of two residential units on the third floor.
Good evening. David Mimblett representing the petitioner.
Talking to the microphone, counselor. Microphone.
Ricky yells at me when I don't hold it right, though. So we were here for a determination as to whether this is a major or a minor modification. I will leave it to the board's discretion to make that determination. The project, the, the special permit and variances were approved in 2022, I believe. And, um, that was for, for residential units to be built over the Madeline Garcia Real Estate Office. I'm sorry, I just mixed up my papers as I usually do. And Ms. Garcia has, um, is proposing now that she turn some, um, framed attic space, which was going to be empty, into two additional units. So there would be six total residential units rather than four. Again, no change to the footprint, but there would be the addition of two, two additional units.
And the variant, it's an additional variance, is it not?
Yeah, it essentially increases the degree of relief needed for parking. It, it, the, now, the total requirement, I think, increased from eighteen when it first came in to now twenty-one and a half.
And we gave them, they have no, they have none?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Or no, no, they have, um, six, six spaces.
Six, okay, six.
Um, but what this also does, adding the two units increases the requirement for open space. And now they would need a variance for open space. Whereas before, when they originally came in, they did not. So it create, it increases the degree of relief needed for parking and creates a new variance.
And my, my feeling is that if you're adding a new variance and we're giving them additional relief, that I think i- it's something that is major and should be heard and should, but I also think, um, so when do we agree that it's major?
Yes, major, yes.
So that being the case, though, I would make a recommendation, and if that, with your approval, counselor, that rather than hear additional, any of the additional, um, facts on this case, because we have a limited board here today, and I think to do all of, all of the petitioner, uh, is fair, yeah, so that he gets as fair a hearing as possible, that it would be better if there's more people here, just as possible, to see that. So I would like to move this to November.
No, that's agreed. That's why I was kind of stumbling around my presentation, trying not to say too much.
Right, so, right, so you were just asking, so you weren't making, you were not, that's why I did not want you to make a presentation. I just wanted to know generally what the major changes were. And I think it's enough to consider, you gave us enough information, in my opinion, to consider it's major. I don't wanna hear anything else because I would like to have a fuller board here, your actual, um, your actual application.
Yeah, that's agreed.
Agreed? So we, so we have a, a vote to make, to have a vote to major, to say it's major and to move it to November?
I make it.
Yes.
And you, you vote to make it major, move it to November 2nd, by Arthur. All in favor?
Aye.
November 12th, Wednesday.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second by?
Arthur.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.